Mr. Reiser.
Welcome to Scioto Township Board of Trustees meeting.
Do you have another one of these?
Let's bring this meeting, call to order, please. Um, I don't know what time.
Uh, seven oh one.
Seven oh one. Quick point off, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Carrie?
Present.
Yeaple?
Present.
Flintoff, present.
Grant?
Here.
Monk?
Here.
Noel?
Present.
Reiser?
Present.
All here. Also here is our office coordinator, Kristy Aiken, township attorney, Mariah Think.
Let's move on to adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions? Or changes? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we had to go to the Pledge of Allegiance and it was stuck in with the roll call.
Okay. Um, I had some proposed changes to the agenda. I would um, ask that we take H seven off consent and move it to new business.
At the bottom of new business?
I would, it's, it's up to your discretion where, but I would suggest the top of new business. The fire chief will be here and that'll be quick. And then he can go home.
H seven at the top of the new business.
I would also suggest if there's um, no objection, that we move K one, K two, and K three to the consent agenda.
I was going to do that. I would support that.
And I would also like to um, propose, we remove my item J two from the agenda altogether. The reason being, I just received an email from Representative Ryan Gens, um, letting us know any action won't be necessary um, tonight.
I would uh, thank you. I would propose to uh, put J one, claim for payment, uh, to consent.
Mariah, so if that's moved to consent, would I have to reduce myself from the, from the whole consent?
Probably.
Okay. Fine. I don't have an issue with anything else.
Yeah, and then it, would, would you do a roll call for consent?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say procedurally, we would first take a motion related to your stated conflict and then I would do a roll call on each, okay?
I don't think you have to do a roll call on each. I think you could do a roll call on the consent agenda.
Okay, and voice vote for the first one?
Regardless, we're, um, what I'm talking about is, is the vote to conflict. Yes, got it.
And I have one more if it's not already done, maybe my, it's, but is there an H seventeen under consent?
Um.
If not, I propose the appointment of Anna Fletcher for the planning commission.
Well, she would be to add that.
Yes, to add as H seventeen.
Yeah, please, thank you.
One more suggestion. So, um, because Joel is here this evening as well as her applicant, uh, for, if, if, if he's willing and if her board is interested, we want to introduce this one.
Under E?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Joel, is that fine with you?
Yes. And just, to the extent that there are other appointees here, and I know that there are, I would, uh, to the extent they want to do an introduction at E if they want to, that they be allowed to as well. They don't have to, they want, if others are going to be appointed, want to.
Let's see.
Sure.
Find out.
Yeah, we got people in. Okay, any other changes? Is there a motion to approve the agenda or the consent agenda?
I would move it to approval as we've amended.
Yes, a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Support? Remove by Reiser, support by Noel.
Call her favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No, okay, I, agenda, agenda adopted. Yes, communications, and was there anything more? We just have the ones.
Um, there's actually two. I overlooked one, apologies, but added it. From David Reed regarding the Jackson Road Working Group, and then also from Jim Adams regarding the priority waste issue.
Now we can move on to introductions and recognitions. Ryan?
Do you want me to start?
Please.
This is, this is the first time I've gotten to do this since I was a member of the public.
It was so long ago.
I know. Aurora, you want to start?
Sure, so currently we've had, um, the deputy treasurer position has been vacant since November twentieth, and it's been temporarily filled by the appointment of David Reed. Thank you, Mr. Reed. And Ryan has successfully found a candidate, and we've offered a conditional job offer to Joel Foster, who comes with us with experience in Treasury Department and other municipality right now. And um, just wanted to just basically welcome him, and then I'll let him, hopefully if you have any questions, let him answer.
Awesome. Welcome, Joel. Tell us about yourself.
Well, first and foremost, I just want to say, um, thank you to the board and thank you to the treasurer for allowing me to have this opportunity. I'm super excited to work with Mr. Yeaple and to, um, just serving the Scioto Township residents and working with all of you on how to um, help Scioto Township grow. Um, I am twenty-five years old and I'm currently a senior at Eastern Michigan University. I have one class left for graduation, and my major will be business management. I am newly married. I just got married in August of twenty twenty-four, and I'm here with my wife that's sitting behind me. I've been in municipal government with the Ipsalani Township and the Treasurer's Office for uh, four years now. And um, when I saw this job opportunity come open, I just thought it was ready for me to take my next step and see what else I can do with my potential and serve the residents of Scioto Township, and I'm glad to be here.
We're really excited that you're here.
Awesome, looking forward.
And Ryan, when is Joel's first day?
Joel's going to start on December the eleventh.
Ready.
Excellent. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I was thinking of a holiday party.
Oh, they.
December, oh, by the way, this is December twelfth. We'll talk about that. We'll talk about that. Yeah, I will stay out.
Stay up here for introductions. Is um, David Rogers here?
Hi, David.
So we've offered David, um, conditional job offer of employment for the building maintenance custodian position. You know, that's been vacant um, for a few months, and we're excited that he has accepted um, the position. He um, comes with us, past experience, seven plus years of ground maintenance and custodial experience um, at Washtenaw Community College. So he will be an immediate asset to the, um, to Scioto Township and to the department.
Awesome.
Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Now, do you, go ahead. When do you start? Oh, this is a conditional. Oh, conditional, yes, but, right, but it's conditional, but then to go through.
Aurora, do you have any expectations?
Okay, good. Great, and I want to thank Aurora, Kristy, and Brandon. You did a great job kind of going through recruitment process, and I know that you had a lot of candidates and are bringing us your best recommendation. Um, David, we're really looking forward to working with you.
For the guys as well. Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You know, other appointments, um, any? Well, yeah, um, anyone else that is on the consent agenda regarding appointments, would you please come forward? Anyone online? Well, Judy. Oh, right. No, we had a, I mean, there was a mistake in your um.
Oh, that was in.
Yeah, I had, I, you're one year for land, for LPC, not four.
Do I need to introduce myself?
No, no, no.
Sorry.
Laura Hindle.
Bye, good.
Hi. Hi, Laura. How are you all?
Laura, um. I've known you for a while as a resident and your involvement in the township, and I had um, approached you to see if you would be interested in um, as a committee or a commission member on the planning commission. So uh, could you just introduce yourself a little bit?
Laura Hindle, I've been a resident of Scioto Township since nineteen ninety-two, actually. Built two homes here, built an office building, and actually also um, was an investor and also um, the developer with River Woods Development. I'm Zeeve in Huron River Drive, former business owner here in Scioto Township and retired now and just thought I'd put myself out there here on the planning commission. It's always been something that I've been interested in. Look forward to serving people of Scioto Township and you all.
Yeah, thank you, Laura.
I look forward to working with you on the planning commission.
I agree. Thank you. Yes, for the LPC. You're just here all the time.
We already got him a shirt.
Sorry.
I just want to be clear, David bought that shirt of his own money.
I did.
Years ago.
She organized the whole thing and we all bought them. David Reed, Scioto Township, twenty, um, actually, Laura beat me by a year. I moved here in ninety-four, I think. But I've been on the uh, LPC, I think I was on it for four or five years, so I'm thankful that I was asked to be back on it again, so um, thank you for letting me join. Uh, and I look forward to working with you. I'm sorry?
Excited to see you come forward.
Excited or worried? You know, you know, like they say, just when you think you're out, they pull you back.
Yeah, and I do have to say, and thank you so much, David, um, that we did, we hit quite a few applications, and your application came in way early and it got lost in our system, so I apologize for that. But I'm thanking to anybody and everybody that has applied for these um, committees, and I'm going to keep the applications for the future because we will have openings one day. But, yeah, so thank you. Anyone online? Okay, um, next is public comment. Uh, this is the time for members of the public to get to five minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Oh, oh, yeah, should have just said.
I didn't know if you had any more introductions. Um, real quick, I just want to speak about the item you have on your agenda regarding the um, heating system, the geothermal, the water, ground-based geothermal. Um, I know some folks have concerns about it, but I just want to say, I built two houses in Scioto Township in the last twenty-six years. Both of them have ground-based geothermal system. The first one, the, uh, when we were building it, um, our geosystem cost fifty percent more than a regular gas-fired furnace. Um, and so I was a little concerned about that, but I tracked the electricity very carefully over the, the first few years we lived there, and the system actually paid for itself in just under seven years. It was like six years, nine months, something like that, so call it seven years. So I think that's an excellent investment, number one, and number two, obviously it's eco-friendly, takes the water out of the ground and puts it right back down again. Um, actually, no, you're going to have closed loops, so it never even comes out of the ground, so um, that's a good thing. I have seven closed loops on my, on my new house, and um, they work very well, and the system is virtually maintenance-free, so.
May I ask about your experience with VRM HVAC versus the coil?
I don't know, I, you know, that's something I'm not familiar with. I, we have just coils in the ground, three hundred feet deep, seven of them, that's all I know. They, and then I tell you, this ground out here, I hope, maybe the, the glacier wasn't as uh, was, was as gifted, you're not as gifted from the glacier as we are, but each well took a day to drill because of the rock. They go down the first hundred feet, and then the next two hundred feet took the rest of the day.
Because of the rock?
Because of rock, yeah. Glacier just left all its rocks here, or at least in my backyard. So, be prepared, but tell the, tell the guys who drilled the well to be prepared, but, okay, but, I'm sorry. Sorry? The people.
Not guys.
Not guys.
Oh, yes.
You're doing great till then.
Looks like the HVAC is going to be popular. Hi, public comment.
Kim Boyd, a Scioto resident, Scioto community newsletter, Scioto government launch doc. Dolan David, I am so happy to have you um, in this community, and this is awesome, so thank you for stepping forward. Regarding unfinished business, J three, approval of ground-sourced geothermal HVAC system. I see the cost of the various options, and I realize Scioto has pledged to bring our greenhouse gas emissions down to zero. The figures for the construction costs after grants and repays, rebate seem to be approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not an insignificant cost. My concern is, what are the other costs that will be associated with the installation? It was said in a previous meeting that parts of Scioto's workforce would have, uh, would have to be relocated or work from home for around three to six months. What are the costs associated with that effort, and is that in the budget for this work? I also understand that tonight you will be paying for the repair of a heat exchanger. Clearly, we're in need of that repair. However, it does pain me to think that this repair could soon be torn out with the new system um, when it's installed. As many of you know, I've had solar since twenty-ten with, uh, with a DTE bill that carries a credit much of the year, so let me be clear, I'm not against the project. My concern is that we have a full picture of the total expenses and inconvenience, um, of what they will be. Um, and that, that is, is um, given to the residents so that we understand the whole scope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Tag team, but we each get our own three minutes, right?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
We don't need that.
Uh, I'm Liz Wiseman. I'm a resident and I am co-chair with Lisa of Land Preservation Commission. I am here to read to you an email that I said that you haven't had a chance to read because I just sent it before the meeting, okay? Um, and this is addressed to Jessica. She was the one that gave us this information. Um, Jessica, I believe the board's policy since January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four has been to send applications for vacancy to LPC so that we can take a look, provide input, and a recommendation to the board. When I last talked with Jillian, she said that David Reed wanted the open LPC seat, but had not yet applied. Lisa and I are hearing from you today, that is this afternoon, that there are in fact two applicants for LPC's vacancy. You've told me previously that when an application comes in, it is automatically forwarded to all members of the board.
That's true.
That being the case, I suspect you and other board members have known about both applications before today, and unlike Darryl Burkhart's application, have chosen not to forward them to members of LPC or review. Given the circumstances, it looks to me, that's just me, um, as if this board is engaging in the same type of favoritism and partiality that it objected to among members of Will Hathaway's board. We ask that the board postpone a vote on an individual to fill LPC's open seat until all applicants can be transparently and fairly evaluated with input from the LPC. Thanks for your consideration, and signed by me. Um, I just want to say, I am not taking a position on who should fill this seat. We are just asking that all applicants be considered.
Want to go? Yeah, and I would like to say something. I did not know that the applications were supposed to be sent to the LPC.
That was Jessica's policy.
And I.
It's, it's attached, I attached it to the email, so it's there.
I'm looking at the policy. Then you direct me to where that is in the policy?
Well, it says you get input from various.
Yeah, I'm not, and I'm not questioning, I'm not.
I don't know exactly where.
No, 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 that's okay. I'm like literally, literally just looking for it. I'm not questioning that.
No, I know you're not. I know.
I'm just looking for it because I can't um, remember.
H two, the last paragraph, maybe?
So, yeah, I just want to look, this is board policy.
The board encourages committee chairs to engage.
Yeah. So the, yeah, the, right, so the, the board, the board encourages committee chairs to engage the member whose term is expiring in a discussion about the appointment. Because we wanted to make sure we weren't losing, you know, people who wanted to re-up, right? Current committee chairpersons are encouraged to provide township officers information relevant to assist the board in making its decisions. There's unaddressed issues, da-da-da-da, and so I guess one's processing going forward. Um, not that we can't address something about tonight's, but something we could consider that would be an easy fix is we automatically have those applications, and I, I will just say, this board just got here and we got about fifteen applications for all these different bodies. We could set it up so that it's also automatically sent to committee chairs, too.
That'd be great.
Is that a, I mean, that's an administrative improvement.
So that it would automatically what, did you say?
Be forwarded to the committees.
Oh, great. So that's what you did with Darryl.
Uh, I'm, one or the other. I'm not sure which I'm going to commit to right now. At least the chairs.
Yeah, chairs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are you suggesting that any application goes to all of the chairs, or the position they're asking the committee?
The committee that they're, yeah, well, yeah, as FYI.
Okay, but we've had applicants that listed five different committees.
Right, so it would go to five.
Okay, and regarding like the DDA compensation commission and.
Yep.
All the statutory duties of the supervisor to appoint.
Mm-hmm, but it's the, the information because it's, that, that's part of it when we were designing this is like, you know, the online's helpful because it's not just to one person's email box, right, so then we can get it out to the board, but we can do better and then just get it out to the board and the committees that they've applied to. Okay, I mean, it's a small thing, but we can do that. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to say with your other two minutes?
Uh, well, I'll just say that I am Lisa Pappas. I'm serving my second term on the LPC with Liz. I'm, we're all volunteers. I work full-time. She's retired. We just care about green space. Um, and I, I love this policy and what it, it's meant to do. Um, it says the purpose of this policy, uh, it's to standardize the process to give applicants and nominees even consideration. Um, the township benefits from having diversity of perspectives and lived experiences of its committee members. Standardizing the process allows for better outreach to community about the opportunities to serve, and all of this sounds so great, right? Like really being fair and transparent and having outreach. There's even mentions about having better outreach, and we just haven't had any outreach at all. So I would just, one, encourage greater transparency and fairness in the process of accepting and reviewing applications. Um, I didn't know that David Reed had applied until three o'clock today. I did not find out until three o'clock today that somebody named Molly Maher also applied. Um, I looked her up. She looks like a fine individual, works at the university. Um, it would have been nice to have, for you all to have known that, so that you could vote knowing. Um, this policy was allegedly instituted to give applicants and nominees even consideration, so I would hope that this Molly person could get equal consideration. Um, I would encourage sharing and review of all applicants per the policy that says all applicants received for all committees shall be available to review by township offices. So this is all reinstating what Liz already said. Um, I would encourage just the re-review of this entire policy. There are a lot of things in here that, quite frankly, are not being done. Um, and I. Yes, um, one is for the township clerk to notify people um, ahead of time if their terms are coming up. Um, at, and uh, at least a hundred and twenty days prior to the expiration of each committee term, the clerk shall provide notice that the term is ending to the committee member whose term is expiring. Um, I know that wasn't done for me. I, I don't think it was done for well. I don't, I just, that hasn't been done. Um, I don't know how important it is, but since it was said that addresses and personal information will be redacted, that hasn't been done. Um, ample time to promote openings, um, that hasn't been done. As a matter of fact, you know, I'm a volunteer. I wrote a nice long article to, to, to do community outreach to find somebody. I have nothing against David Reed, but I wrote this big long article for the newsletter, only to be told a couple.
This afternoon.
Today at three o'clock. Oh, don't, guess we don't need it because y'all have decided that you're appointing David Reed. So I have nothing against David Reed. I've never met the man, other than seeing what you've written on next door during the village renewal for LPC. So um, nothing against anybody. I just, if we want to have transparency and fairness, let's, let's do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you.
And I just want to say, I, I know I received the uh, application from Molly Mayer. I'm assuming the rest of the board.
Well, the entire board did.
Yeah.
I mean, so we can, and again, that policy, we never had any policy, and so we're trying, but we need to improve our practice, our policy. I think a lot of what we're running into, too, is we just had a bunch of people start a new job about a week and a half ago, but we need to do better, and I mean, I, I hear you and agree.
I mean, you did this for a good purpose, so it's worth revisiting.
Yeah, I would just note, I don't think we need to revise the whole policy, but we need to look at our practices and, and how we do it. I'm also hearing that, you know, the chair people would like more communication. Yeah.
Yeah.
We are looking forward to working with you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Continue.
Yeah, public comment.
Good evening. Alan Bravano, representing Low Density Parkwood, sent you an email, asked the township an email last Friday. Uh, it was titled, "Warm Welcome to the New Board," and I'll just recite that. Dear Board Member, dear Board of Trustees, just a short note from our group to heartfully and fully express the above-subject line. Over our long period of activism, our dedicated group never took the NIMBY approach. We only respectfully asked for and negotiated reasonable neighborly reduced density for SP twenty-one oh twenty-one. However, looking forward and not back, we were encouraged and proud when many of our people via Zoom watched all of you sworn in on November twentieth. In the wake of that officialdom, each of us has great anticipation for Scioto's comparative better governance. for SIO's comparative better governance. And save for your newbie trustee, each and every one of you held and appreciated open ear for us during those difficult thirty months. Some of you were extremely helpful in more constructive ways, including SIO staff. The latter would specifically be Christie and Fran. Our group will never forget that and wishing you all the very best going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Kevin Jackson, SIO Township resident for about twenty-seven years now. Um, I do not envy any of you. It is hard being in government, but I am here to congratulate everybody that won their election. And as Alan stated, that listened to the low-density residents of the Parkwood Condominium Association. We are not against development. We just want to keep the community as it is. That corridor of calm between, uh, down Z Road between Park and Liberty is very much a calming corridor, and then you hit downtown SIO. So when the next developer comes, you'll probably see the low-density group here again just trying to steer things that will keep SIO Township the great community to live in. And again, congratulations to everyone and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Amy.
Renee Gluback, SIO Township resident, and I said I wasn't saying anything tonight.
Okay.
I wish that some people that have left would still be here. Um, I would just like to recommend that in reviewing what someone asked a very new board that we have successfully brought in here and are very much supported by SIO Township, all of you, in your wisdom, your experience, previous time. Um, as an applicant to a committee, it does tell you on the website that your letter of interest and resume will be shared with the township board as well as the, at this time, Christie. So, um, I would like to say that that would have to be changed. With that said, I would also like to say, and I wish it had been heard by someone else, that you had a transition, a major transition coming in at holiday time. Tons of new employees, new board members, all of this. And on top of that, there were, um, communication issues for the internet and the software system going on. I personally experienced that and I'd like to thank Christie, Gillian, for help, Supervisor Jill, uh, Gillian, to, um, sorry, um, gotta get used to this, um, for helping me to process that along. Um, I think that some of the comments that were made just previously, in my opinion, indicated a shortness of patience. And also, which I've heard from other residents, a lack of confidence. You are the Board of Trustees for SIO Township. Ultimately, I can understand communication. Certainly, I'm a big supporter of that. But when it comes down to it, all of you, we voted and support to make decisions for the best people on the committees. Um, I'd like to think that this board is in charge of our township and that committees understand that they report to you. And many of us in the township have noticed that that might be a problem. So I want to say that I hope if I have any time to be on a committee or anyway support this township, that I want you to understand. Contrary to what I've heard previously this evening, I believe you know the best judgment. I believe in fairness. I believe in, um, opportunity for everyone, but things happen. Computers go down, internet goes down, transition. You are all doing the very best you can. And I'd like to go on record that I support that and I also support that you know the best. And that includes above-chair people and committee members. So, thank you, and if you do make that change, you just might want to keep in mind, it doesn't say that on the website, probably should. And I don't know how everyone would feel about just sending personal letters of interest and correct. So I just would like to say from my point of view, you guys are doing a great job. I believe you know what's best for us and hopefully you just have a lot of committees and chair people that will understand they answer to this board that has been elected by the residents of SIO Township. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else in, um, in person? Anyone in line?
If you participate via Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. Rob Pattinson, you're up.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, SIO Township president. I agree with Renee. It's unfortunate that co-chairs, LPC co-chairs, Wiseman and Pappas left the meeting right after they spoke. Um, I appreciate them bringing this issue forward at the second meeting of the new board so that we do things different in the future. I appreciate that, um, we have a lot of, uh, of healing to do and this is part of it. So I appreciate them bringing up the issue. I just wish they had stuck around to, um, hear some response. Um, to Mr. Bravano and Mr. Jackson, thank you for, um, setting the bar for how a neighborhood responds to a hostile developer. Um, the Parkwood neighborhood could not have done a better job. I will let you know that at last night's planning commission meeting in Laura Krepp's planner's report, there is absolutely no mention of Abra's Grove. So we have no idea if that is still simmering or if that's taken off the books completely. Um, but as of yesterday, uh, there's no mention of that in the planner's report. And then I find it ironic that the very last interaction I had with a former supervisor was him refusing to answer a question from a resident. And I look forward to when we have questions in the future to have much more interaction with this board and be able to ask questions and expect answers. Um, kudos tonight to, uh, our, um, Chief Hood for getting a nearly ninety percent discount on firefighter equipment. Um, that was very well done and I'm glad that we're, we're exploring all of the avenues that we can to get funding for the fire department. And Kathy, uh, Kathy Knoll, Trustee Knoll, thank you very much for your letter, um, about the solar, um, uh, issue before the ZBA. That was very painful to watch. And, um, something as, as much as a priority as solar and sustainability is in SIO Township, we need to do something about the, um, solar policies with regard to the planning commission and to the ZBA to give them better, um, guidance on how solar should be considered. I understand why the ZBA denied the, um, the application the way they did. It was based on, uh, the current, uh, regulations that we have. I disagree with, um, the way they went about it, but I understand where they were coming from. And then lastly, two things. I would ask that the board, uh, in the very near future, uh, begin plans for a forensic audit. We've been asking for that for years and I think that's very important for the, um, for the board to get that process started. And then can we do something about the PUD, Public Benefit Policy? We've been asking for that for a year or two and nothing has happened on that. I think it would be, uh, fair to residents and developers to get that on the record, um, so that they know what to, developers know what to expect. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Rob. Any other news?
Yeah.
I see none. Gillian?
Um, Trustee Knoll? Okay. Rob, I want to respond to something you said, um, regarding Abra Grove. And I know several people know this, but Inovant has filed uh, an appeal claim regarding the board decision. It's underway. As far as I know, it hasn't been assigned to a circuit court judge yet. It, it has. It has. Who's, who's the judge? I believe it's Tim Connors. He's leaving at the end of the year now, so be reassigned.
I've got one, one thing. Work it out.
Okay. Um, so this is just starting the process. So we don't, I don't have a lot of information yet and I'll leave it at that. Laura will include it in future reports, more information.
Thank you very much.
I don't, I wouldn't have expected our planner to include that in her report, just by the way.
Well.
Um, moving on to the approval of the minutes.
I would approve or approve of, um, or support your, yeah.
Now, go away.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
Just one quick question.
Yeah, we need, um.
We change the name of City Attorney Township Attorney. That was the one thing I saw.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed.
No, it's good.
I'll make that change.
Everything else looked great.
I think I've had.
Is that a friendly amendment to Monk and Riser?
It is.
So you have a motion as amended on the table, Gillian?
Um, a motion to approve the amended minutes.
Yes.
Do I have a second? Is there support? Oh, I'm sorry. Right. Well, for the amended, amended motion.
Oh, yes, it was a friendly one, so we don't have to redo it.
Yeah. Um, motion to, for, motion to approve the amended minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a support? A support?
We have first and a second, so we just need to call the roll.
Okay, but if we have an amended, amended.
It's a friendly amendment.
It was a friendly amendment.
Which, which means that we don't have to take a full.
Oh, I see.
They're basically the first and the second or.
They stay.
The first or in the second or, as I started saying suddenly.
So do you.
Are good with it.
It's been a really long day. This is like going on twelve hours here. Okay.
All in favor.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, so, um, let's see, where are we now? A consent agenda. Clerk Flintoff, will you take this?
Um, sure, absolutely. Um, the consent agenda, um, includes one item that I understand Supervisor Carrie, would you like to, um, but does anybody here have a conflict? Would you like to state?
I have a conflict. This, um, the, the agenda item that we have moved from unfinished business J one to consent, this is regarding attorney fees for myself. So I definitely have an interest and I am requesting to be recused from this vote.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, allow Supervisor Carrie to, um, recuse herself based, for the reason abstain, thank you, to abstain for reasons stated on the record.
Second.
Support. Okay. Do you have the no support?
Motion by Flintoff, support by Knoll. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The A's have it. Motion passes. I'll continue, um, on the consent agenda as amended. Um, we, I'd like to take a roll call vote because it includes money. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Support by Riser.
Moved by Knoll, support by Riser. Roll call vote for our rules. We're going to start with the ye-ble. Ye-ble?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Fran?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Motion adopted, six to zero. Thank you. Gillian?
So we're onto reports and here was a, a report that was added, uh, Trustee Knoll.
Briefly go over it. I've talked to some of you about it already. Um, at the ZBA meeting last, Rob Pattinson mentioned this also. We had a three to two vote and a resident was requesting a variance regarding her setback, proposed setback for a solar array. She, she had a one-acre lot and the soil conditions were restrictive in part of the lot where she might have placed the solar array. The county would not allow her to put it in that area because it was her subject drainfield area. So the options were limited. The neighbor living closest to her had no objections. The neighbor had sent a letter of support to the ZBA. Um, the property line, it was kind of on a diagonal. So with the proposed placement of the solar array, only a third of it required the variance, the approximately fifteen-foot variance. The other two-thirds of the array were in compliance with our fifty-foot setback. So it was a very small request, in my opinion, and in the opinion of one other person. Um, however, it is correct that the, the three who voted to deny the variance request felt that our ordinance is clear and if the township board wants to do things differently, we need to change our ordinance as it pertains to solar, solar arrays in a yard. And basically, there was extensive discussion about how our setback agreements are in fact at odds with our stated goals of promoting environmentally responsible development. So we had a very intense discussion at the ZBA and we could all see each other's perspective. But vote was three to two. I'm raising this issue with the board. I've raised it with Laura Krepp's and Jan Colbertson. It, it will be discussed again, but we put, it's something we're going to need to address. The planning commission had been addressing a solar, a new solar ordinance. They've been working on it for six months probably. And, but it didn't include this issue. It didn't a- address anything related to setback. So, you know, whether we want them to include this issue or whether we want to handle it separately, I don't know. We're going to have to discuss that. But I'm just presenting it to you tonight so everybody can be aware of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other report.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm already working on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. In terms of the solar ordinance? It's going to be separate from the solar ordinance because there's litigation about the solar ordinance right now about this, the whole solar, um, uh, well, state one.
Larger format solar facility.
A nicer term for what I was thinking. Um, yeah, so, so there's a lot of litigation about what the state is doing with solar and, uh, we think that because the issue really is, is a solar array and accessory structure. That's the only thing that it can fall under now. It really should have its own category. So I'm, I'm working on it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Would, if the ordinance gets passed in the near future, would the applicant then be eligible likely under the, an amended ordinance?
Good question. I don't know. We had another lengthy discussion about tabling it, but there wasn't sufficient support to table it for a while. Um, I don't know what the procedure would be if indeed we amend this ordinance. I mean, we could get in touch with her, I assume, but then in theory, she would have to, a couple would have to repay, I, I assume. I don't know.
I, I think that's something that we can discuss.
Let's discuss it later.
Thank you for the opinion.
Carlisle Wartman, um, report is included. And also, um, I believe this is Clerk Flintoff?
Um, yeah, real briefly, um, first kind of running list of upcoming proposed agenda items. You don't need to discuss it in depth, Judy, but, uh, Judy, thank you. She's given me two items to add to the list. Um, the SIO barn, because especially because of the terms of their lease, as well as, um, priority waste, um, recommendation from Tom, our Worma representative, to begin conversations with them. If there's any other item. If there's any other item you'd like to give me now at the board table or privately, please do so and I'll try to keep track.
Okay, good. Potentially, can I request a special meeting as a work session to talk about township priorities? We all have.
Yeah.
We all come with goals. And it'd be nice to prioritize those so that we can speak with one voice in a sense to what the township is working on.
All right. Would you like to make a motion to call for the special meeting? I mean, if we have enough consensus and a kind of defined purpose or do we want to kind of talk through the purpose of it more?
I think it would be good to talk through the purpose of it more. I can add that to this list.
Okay, yeah, let's just add it for right now.
Yeah.
Then.
Because I think Jillian, you were talking or Supervisor.
Supervisor Jillian's fine.
You were talking about having work sessions. So this would be a good intro to getting that into a schedule.
Agreed, sure. And if you have ideas for work sessions, then just kind of, you know, send me an email or call me and we'll. We don't want to have a, you know, every day, but.
Did you put the one we discussed earlier at the development review meeting on the list?
You guys, this is a list of items for an agenda. This is not a list of future meetings unless they're.
No, I know, but topics, topics.
Topics. You're right, there's topics.
Sewer, onsite sewer issues.
Yes.
Community.
And that will be, and I did talk with Matt about that. We're looking.
I'll add that. I would say back to Kathleen's idea and Judy, it sounds like she supports it. I support it. In terms of a works, work planning session, I would just ask if one or two people could maybe work together with like a pretty proposed kind of purpose and scope so that we kind of have some objectives for it. Since we're a new group with goals, you know, I think if we can fight off a piece that feels achievable, that that could could be good.
And I believe a resident brought up a couple of other things that we needed to speak about and plan towards. And there was another. I'll look back in the notes, there's something else. Okay. More discussion on this? Reports? Sorry, Kristi. Oh, Kristi, sorry.
Oh, no. Okay. I I don't have anything.
Sure. It's been a long day for Kristi. Pressure report.
So I did get a chance to take this up into the report, but we got all the bank accounts updated. There's 27 or 28 bank accounts with all the new signers. That's exciting. All the tax bills are prepared and can be mailed shortly. You want a copy, go online and pull a copy of it. We're happy for you to copy in person. Thank you to Laura from Plant Moran, who was about to put in that dossier very expediently. Looking forward to having Joelle here to help. There's lots of receipts coming in, especially utility bills. But we did have our first several taxpayers come in and pay some in cash, some in checking some through direct deposit today, so.
Sounds like you've been busy.
Yeah.
Clerk, do you have a report?
Nothing wrong. I have a somewhat of a report. It has been November 20th. So what day are we on now? Yeah, it's been, it's been a lot of fun. It's been a lot of work. I feel like I'm standing on one foot drinking out of a fire hose, but there's a lot of support. We have a lot of things that we're we're working on, getting acclimated. Hundred emails every day. And I just, yeah, we're doing our best and just want to let everybody know. And the staff has been absolutely amazing. So thank you.
Yeah, and I do want to thank Kristi in particular, Giulio, Brandon, the whole gang for all the transitions with all the offices and computers and all of that. And and to the new board members too, like you've been awesome and flexible, but thank you.
Thanks to their new.
Moving on to unfinished.
Do you want reports from the planning commission?
Yes.
Oh. Yes, we have departments and committees. That's right.
So the the primary topic was, you can tell us yesterday, was approval or denial of the application for a PUD for the facility called Mini Hands Living Community, which is on Baker Road. As a reminder, this property is owned by Dave Lutton and he has vocalized his goals with that property with parts of it being acquired for a conservation easement and parts of it, 45 acres to be annexed to the city of Dexter. So during the meeting yesterday, the application was recommended for denial at a vote of three to two based on the rationales that the plan as presented does not meet SIO's ordinance for community waste utility systems. They are asking for a deviation, a significant deviation. And that was stated as the reason that it would be denied. Further, I brought an issue to the planning commission that I would like to present to this board and ask if I can get a legal opinion. I have been reading zoning ordinance and for this facility, we do have an ordinance on adult foster care facilities. And it describes three different types based on number of occupants. And this would be a congregate facility. This is chapter 36 dash five. First, I looked at definitions. So I believe this application fits this definition. And further, when I look at this zoning ordinance, 36 dash five, subsection three, it talks about the township may issue by a conditional use permit authorization to establish an adult foster care congregate facility in the MR2 and MR3 districts. Those are zoning for multi-family housing. And it says such facility shall be prohibited in other districts. So I brought this to the planning commission and asked that they table the decision that we, I would request a legal opinion on whether that is prohibited. The planning commission members thought that a PUD overrides any other. That the PUD could happen in any zoning district. And I further cited 36 dash three conflict with other laws. In the the heart of this is the provision which is more restrictive or which imposes a higher standard or requirement shall govern. So based on my limited understanding of legal theory, I'm getting better.
You are.
I'm not a lawyer. This seemed to me to say that this would not be allowed in an A1. So I'm asking the board, may I ask for a legal opinion on this topic?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
No, I I don't believe that you need permission from the board.
I think it's, I think it's worthwhile to state that I, I think it's worthwhile instead of a sort of.
It's a, I think it's a nice practice, when when practical to make the request in public and I appreciate that.
Experience.
Yeah.
Because they may in fact pursue it. Well, I believe they, I believe they want to bring it before the board.
Okay.
So if, if my understanding of this zoning is correct, we could save the applicant a lot of time and effort. By.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you and Mariah can connect one on one, make sure she's clear on your question and then you can get the answer.
I'll send you this detail. And that was the most significant thing from the planning.
Excellent. Thank you for the update. Quick question, who are the two that were missing? Why were there only five people there?
Well, the chair refused abstain.
Okay.
And there's one vacancy.
Because Ryan stepped down.
Right, terminated. So there's one vacant. Yeah, we just named someone tonight.
Thank you. Okay.
We need two people tonight.
Right. We just.
Any other department or committee? All right, moving on to unfinished business. We removed J1 to the consent agenda and.
J3.
Yeah. J3 was left. And this is brought by Chris Chang.
Yeah. Long friend.
Chris, okay. Great, thank you three for working on this.
Uncle online. Should I bring in Jan or anybody else?
I believe Caleb should be online.
Well, we wanted to share some new information before. And then if we have questions, we can.
Thank you, Jan and Caleb. You should be able to rejoin as panelists now.
More.
Okay, Jan, Caleb, feel free to share your screens if you wish and unmute yourselves when you're ready. Thanks for being here.
All right, good evening, board. So in preparing this item, we want to give a quick background of what's happening currently with our system. So inclination engineering evaluated replacing the system, the the three rooftop units that we currently have. These units are past their life expectancy and so therefore a group was formed to explore the various replacement options. Their current HVAC system has a lifespan of 20 years. That was installed in 99. So we're six years past that lifespan and are currently dealing with a maintenance issue already. As most people know, we have a small hole in the heat exchanger that is releasing maybe small amounts of carbon monoxide, but that could change at any time. So that has been approved as an emergency to get replaced. That is getting scheduled, the part has been ordered. The secondary thing is we lost control of our zones and the, from what unit two is in control of, which is basically the whole front office. There's only one thermostat that is controlling all the heat currently in that area, leaving mainly the outer perimeter building office spaces, usually around 60 degrees in the morning. And the heating is not turning off. It's just running, running, running to try to maintain an appropriate temperature. So that was like an item under new business that was moved to consent. So we'll be replacing our TU controller and a Jace controller for additional cost of $12,000. So now we're up to $24,000 worth of emergency replacements in order to get our system up and running. So just take that into consideration. Given the age of the current HVAC system, we are definitely at risk of a, a much more significant failure, which could lead to an extended period of time the employees would be subject to getting to extreme or or hot temperatures, freezing cold or hot temperatures depending on the year. And if it's significant enough and if the parts take forever to get in, it could lead to a temporary building closure depending on how extreme it it may be. So based on this information, the committee was informed by Caleb. Multiple options, the subcommittee brought it down to three different options that we wanted to talk about today. The first option is the variant refrigerant flow. This is non-geothermal air source. The initial out of pocket expense that we would have to pay out of our fund would be $429,000. And I'd like to go back and say that these are the best. Option two, yeah. These are the best estimated prices right now by the engineer. These are subject to change along the way. When we do the design and engineering portion of it, we'll, we'll hone in on the prices more as it goes along. So option two was 429,000 out of the initial, out of, out of a, initial out of pocket expense with $92,000 in grant, which led eventually to $337,000 estimated for the total cost once we received that grant money back. Option four was the variable refrigerant flow, geothermal ground source. The initial out of pocket expense was 613,000, subject to a $30 or 30% federal rebate of 184,000 and a Eagle grant of 92,000, leading to 337,000 out of total cost. Option five is the fan coil unit, geothermal ground source. This is a 670,000 estimated initial out of pocket expense, 30% federal rebate, which we just received information that this would in fact be a 40% rebate. So that 293,000 would be going up by another 10%. And then also we'll receive the Eagle grant of 92,000. So we're looking at just under 377,000 if we added that extra 10% in, based on the engineer's best estimate.
So what's the net, now that it's 40, do you have those numbers?
So three, so we'd, we'd have to, it's just another 10%. So 77,000.
377.
Yeah, three. Yeah, right now it would be 377 with the 30% federal rebates.
Right, but with the extra 10% of the.
$268,000 in 40% rebate, $92,000 for the Eagle grant. So you come to 268,000, 92,000, 310,000 to that.
So that'd be the cheapest option, approximately.
The major just estimates.
Best estimates, yes. So if a board was to decide a path to go down, we would hone in on that. It would be brought back to the board based on the design and engineering report that comes in. It would break down more of a direct cost at that point in time.
My best information, the geothermal is the cheapest.
Correct.
I want to be clear about that.
But I want, I want to let the board know right away of the new information that we have.
Yep.
So it's going to kind of switch a little bit.
Yep.
Of our direction. That we're recommending and why.
And with that, Chris.
So I'll, I'll just state that we did get some new information just recently. And the fan coil system, which is option number five, is manufactured in the United States. So it qualifies for the 40% that Brandon previously mentioned instead of the 30%. And it also limits the refrigerant that's in the system, but it does have fewer zones. So there is a little bit of a give and take there. The DRF system, which is the one that we had recommended, which is number four, that has refrigerant throughout the system and is manufactured overseas. And this is the, the manufacturing is part of the US trade agreement. So with the new administration coming in, there is a threat that those agreements could be broken with tariffs on, you know, Canada and Mexico. So let's just stay tuned. We don't know if there's going to be, you know, additional costs for the DRF system. The thought is with the new administration that they probably wouldn't be able to, to, you know, affect the IRS, which is the Inflation Reduction Act, probably immediately, at least in 2025. But we just don't know that component yet. So it's kind of an unanswered that we just may not be able to answer it at the time. So there could be, you know, the new administration could reduce the capacity of the IRS to process the funding. Other cost items that not be able to get an answer at this time with the community energy management grant is that can those funds be stacked with the IRA, direct payments, pay provisions? The IRA is the Inflation Reduction Act. So Eagle is trying to get a determination based on the multiple funding that they're using for the grant. So we have it down to item or option number four and five, and I could see, you know. And I could see, you know, we have less control with number four. Um, as far as individual thermostats, uh, up in the front part of the office, the older portion. But number five seems to be, it could be more stable also as far as the cost, might be a little more fixed.
And it has a higher annual utility savings per year.
Would we have more, um.
We'd have lots, we'd have less zones.
Correct.
Yeah, but, but more than what we have now?
Absolutely.
Yeah, how many zones do we have now and what will we be going to perform by?
This could be a good question for Caleb to answer.
Thanks, Brandon.
I think it's got 11.
I'm Jan.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I'm Jan.
Great, hi again. Um, so currently you have two rooftop units. Um, they are either going to be heating or cooling, um, breaking up that office section. And you have one that does the conference room, the large meeting boardroom that you're in. Um, so in that sense, you kind of have two zones in that you can only have part of the building doing heating or cooling same, all at the same time. You do have thermostats downstream of those that are like partial zones that close off the airflow. So if, if it's in cooling and a zone is cool enough, it closes the, it closes the damper. I don't know a count of how many of those there are. Um, and as I was mentioning earlier, it's not working right now. Um, so it's just one. The, uh, option four had, let's see, I've got my chart here, 18 zones. And I had 11 in option five. I mean, we can add more zones if that's really gonna be the, the main thing to determine. Um, we could add more zones for the fan coil units, it's just adds a bit more cost.
Can I ask a question, please? Um, Caleb, um, on option four and option five, it, there's a statement that says potential for additional $60,000 incentive for domestic materials. Now, I questioned that because I believe you told me that the VHS HF systems are manufactured overseas. So is that truly a potential?
I think that was the same savings that they were talking about for option five, that that content is all manufactured domestically. The option four, I think there's probably a chance that you might be able to split it and get that extra credit for part of the system. Yeah, when we, when we looked more into it, it did seem that those were manufactured internationally and it's a bit of a confusing, um, accounting. Uh, as to whether, as to whether you can get an exemption for it, for the, for that.
So in light of the new information, and there's no guarantee based on the path what we're going right now, that the work would be complete in 2025, it could be bumped back to, uh, construction in 2026, which brings in what Chris Chang talked about. Uh, we, uh, came together and we decided that, um, based on the new information, that we would be recommending option five, the fan coil unit, um, geothermal ground source as our recommendation to the board to move forward with.
And this option five would be in 2026?
Well, I believe right now the, the hopes of construction is 2025, um, but we'd have to get moving quickly. I mean, I would hope that we could possibly get it done before winter time, um, of 2025, but I don't know if that's possible, we'd have to see, um, what these next steps entail and how long it's gonna take.
So can I ask a quick question?
Thanks, Caleb, I have more questions. Is that okay?
Sure.
So, um, you mentioned something that I noticed, and I think it's significant. The fan coil units are more environmentally friendly because they don't have the refrigerant. So I would have argued for option five anyway. And I believe there's some, um, savings that are not necessarily put in here for, that happens in year 15 to 20. The option four has a 15-year lifecycle, five has 20. If you look at the savings between maintenance and energy consumption over five years, that was about $100,000. Plus, option four would require replacement earlier. And I wasn't sure that that replacement in option four was reflected in the cost curves.
So Caleb, in his first report, did, um, specify that for sure, um, in, in his report. Uh, we were tasked as, uh, as our, our group right here, um, to talk about specifically the system that we recommended, which was option four at the time of us, um, putting this together. And then with light of the new evidence, our new information that we received, we, we decided that option five would be best, but you are 100% correct, uh, uh, based on the life expectancy of the fan coil unit. Um, and, uh, the additional cost savings. One of the main factors that we, uh, led to us at first picking option four was the more zones. But as Caleb mentioned, we can add a few more zones.
And I think the board can evaluate that as you start to get more, more refined engineering costs.
I mean, it's the board's decision which one they wanna, anyway, we, we're just trying to, so.
I'm in support of option five and I was before these cost reductions.
Trusty razor.
Thank you. Um, with respect to the federal rebate and the state Eagle grants, are those, um, on the federal, is that likely to be around next year even with the change of administration? It will be available in 25, 26? What's our best guess in that regard?
Chris, do you wanna say?
25, 26.
Do you wanna tackle that?
Yeah, um, my best guess, uh, my understanding is that that was an act of Congress. And so it would take an act of Congress to change. Um, I think it was specifically designed to be hard to undo in that it pumps a lot of money into a lot of different states. Um, the last I heard a month or two ago, there were, including some, you know, multiple congressional Republicans that did not want that act repealed, um, because it benefited their states and they got, you know, their districts got money from it as well. That being said, it could always be changed, but it would take an act of Congress and it's not under the direct control of the administration. Um, it was, uh, a law passed by Congress.
And is the timing of the reimbursement, that we get it after we purchase the equipment or we get it after the system is up and running? Might that make a difference?
It comes with the tax, like when you would get, when you would file taxes, um, after the system is up and running. And so there might be a short time, a short bridge, um, loan needed or something like that, which can be get gotten through, uh, Michigan saves, the state's green bank.
Caleb, I, I dug into this because we don't file taxes in this municipal corporation. There's an IRS direct pay thing and it comes within reasons, probably within 90 days after we file for it.
And that is something that's, it's on Rebecca's list, she's attended a webinar about how to participate in that.
Okay, I mean, I guess is there, are there any advantages to purchasing, purchasing the equipment now so that we can, or as soon as we're able to, to get the, to, to qualify for the money back while it's still available? That's all I'm asking, I'm, it's a question.
Sure, I thought Caleb, it looked like Caleb was gonna say something.
It sounds like it has to be.
I had like, I, I don't know, that's a tough one. I can't think of a compelling reason that you'd wanna buy it right now.
Um, yeah, I just wanna say, um, you know, process-wise tonight, um, what we're being asked to do and, and timing, and I didn't, I liked the ambitious idea that it'll be done this winter and I've been freezing. And so that would be nice, Brandon, but process-wise tonight, my understanding is if we were to take action and select an option, we would be directing, um, you know, our project manager and team, um, to, uh, develop an RFP for the design and engineering, that would then come back to the board for approval because we approve all formal RFPs. So we would then have a chance to look at it, decide if we want to issue that RFP. That RFP would then go out, we would then get bids back. And then that would be the first time we'd be authorizing money, which would be, I think, best case scenario, um, you know, February, March. So then project timeline starts there. So I, I don't know, I think, I think we're kind of in the, we're at the point where there's enough unknowns that what our team is asking for us from tonight is just direction on an option.
Correct.
For a next step.
Correct.
So are you looking for a motion to authorize this?
Well, we, we still discuss.
Or, or, okay.
Yeah, um, Judy, did you have something?
Um, I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
I was zeroing in on actually a topic that was brought up during private, or excuse me, during public comments, which is, um, true project management. Um, because this is just one aspect of it, but we're in the middle of an operation here and provide services. So, um, you're probably not ready tonight to address, um, timeframe and costs associated with, um, vacating this building and, and what it would mean in terms of, um, our time facilities or something. Um, but I would like to see that before I vote on any authorization of, of money to say, what is it going to be relative to temporary facilities? Um, going to have to run lines to these temporary facilities, a total cost to our taxpayers.
We briefly discussed it about using the clerk's conference room, moving things out of there and just doing small temporary office space, taking cash in through the utility counter, the lunch, using, using that space to temporarily.
Yeah, and, and as long as I know you're looking at it, but I'd like to see it in a plan. That's what project management is, to see.
Right now, we.
This is what has to be done, I know you're not at it.
No, right now I'm, I'm confident, um, that we could probably completely handle all of the workload that we currently do, utilizing, as she said, the clerk's conference room, making additional space in the utility department, additional desk space. Um, and maybe exploring the option for one or two employees to work, uh, from home temporarily, um, as that was done in the past, that might not be the solution. But I fully believe that, um, there should be little to no additional costs. I feel like we could handle everything in the space that we have currently.
Okay, so little to no, um, has a number attached to it.
Right.
I'd like to see that when you cover it or actually.
I want to mention with previous reconstructions and work in the townships, um, they've put up rental, trailer rentals in the back and conducted office work out there.
That's what my understanding has been too, when someone was telling me about it. So that involves cost.
Yeah, we don't suspect that that's gonna, um, be. And then what we would ask is that the initial HVAC system work that's being taken place would happen here in this, um, um, meeting hall that we're in right now. And then this work would get done first, then they would move on to the more main office area. So then we relieve some of the clerk office space and the utility department, um, overflow and we would put more additional space in here for those employees to come into here to do temporary work out of here and for the rest of the space.
That goes into the RFP.
No, so the, the RFP is a request for proposals for the design and engineering work. So they're gonna do the design engineering work of the, of the board-approved system that you guys select. They will do that, then we will take that information and we would take it and have contractors bid on doing the work. Then that would be brought back to the board to select what contract that they would like. Um, and during getting those quotes, um, and a little bit before that, of course, we would be working internally to ensure that we could, um, handle all the work here and accommodate anything that we would need to do at that point in time. If for some reason that we can't, the board would be made aware of it and we would have an estimated cost at that time. However, we don't, we don't really think it's gonna be significant enough at this point for what we're trying to do right now, uh, to have it be a factor, um, because we are still ways away from it. Um, we'll have many more meetings to inform the board at, at that point in time. But yeah, mainly we're just focusing tonight on what system you guys would prefer. And then we can, we can start going from there to tackle all the other things. We, we can't really do nothing until we know what we're doing.
Brandon, do you anticipate, or Chris, do you anticipate any costs to develop the RFP?
Uh, we do, we do not.
I think Caleb and, and Jan would be assisting and there's no cost to that. That's my understanding unless they say.
It's he's, so he's been paid for the portion, uh, to help us with this.
Yeah. I'm quick with that. Sure, thank you.
I just want to say a couple of things, one, on the office space. First of all, I think these concerns are, have been, um, a little overblown. Um, first of all, I don't anticipate outside space, I don't anticipate people working from home. I don't anticipate any disruption in operations. We've done a lot of different things with this building at different times, it's no problem, is my assessment. But more importantly, this does all need to be specked out with numbers. Um, we have launched our capital planning and budget process and I trust that the three of you are including any of these costs related to, you know, to the disruption of work or change in workflow in the proposed budget and capital planning. And I wonder if Judy, if knowing that might, might help.
I'm good, as long as they know we need a plan as opposed to.
Yeah, and.
It's all gonna be okay. And I do have to say that as new board members, this was kind of dropped in our laps. So, you know, this is what I brought up earlier today, but this is where we're coming from too, because we're catching up. So this is a huge thing for us to make a decision on and it's a big ticket number. So we want to make sure that we are on the, you know, we, we're informed so we can, we're serving the public and we have to have, um, all the information. And I know you're doing a great job, it's just that we have not been.
Right, I would, I would just say in summary, based off of our sustainability goals and the options that were given to us that are best practical for our, um, township hall, we have the three options. Um, they're, they're probably not gonna change at all. Um, the prices are very close, um, in figure, uh, give or take a few thousand dollars. Um, over our general fund bed, budget, every dollar matters, of course. Um, but it's, it's more specifically, uh, just the initial phase of what option does the board believe is gonna be the best for the township hall? And as the process goes along, the board will be totally, uh, in the loop on exactly what the new updated costs are gonna be. Um, as, um, Jessica was saying, we are gonna be taking into consideration in the CIP, um, if there does need to have an additional cost attributed to this. Um, those things are gonna happen regardless of what other option that you choose, no matter what. We're gonna have to plan for that and, and take that in consideration, but we are taking that serious, we are planning for it. Um, however, we, we can't start honing in on that until, uh, one of these HVAC system is chosen and then we'll get working right away to get the RFP out and then work internally, um, for planning for the, uh, shifting of employees to, um, the, the, um, department. We're working with Julio for IT support and however, everything's been set up, we'll figure it out. Um, and I am confident that, um, it won't be, it ain't gonna be a big deal.
Okay, um, I do have, there was some, um, Pam Boyd had mentioned about cost of various options. Well, and then the, um, I think she was saying the extra cost that may.
Right, same thing Judy was mentioning, yeah.
Yeah, um, but then it was also about, um, so we have our HVAC system now and we're having issues. Anybody that's in the office for a while knows that. And I was here working on a Saturday when Zach was here and then the HVAC, um, I don't know his name, so I apologize, but he was, um, said that we needed two different items. One would be able to be used with the new HVAC and then the other one could not be.
Correct.
At least at that time, and he said that it was expensive. How much more are we going to have to put into this HVAC? I mean, I know it's speculation, but.
Yeah, so I will let, um, so the component that we should be able to use with the new system, I'll, I'll, I'll say what it is, but then I'll let Caleb, um, maybe explain it a little bit more detail, but it's the Jace. Uh, from what I understand, it's probably like a graphics card type thing. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Caleb answer that one, a little bit more, but that should be able to communicate and work with the new HVAC system that we use. Um, as far as the system right now, the faster we get, um, all the thermostats up and running, um, the quicker that, that HVAC unit is not gonna continuously run. But yes, it's all a guessing game, they're already six years past, anything could happen at any time. So the, the quicker we make a decision and move forward, um, it's a decision that's gonna have to be made whether, you know, it, it, it's, they just have to be replaced. It's to that point where we don't have an option to really push it off anymore. Um, you know, this, this initial investigation into what we were gonna do started in 2021 with, um, Caleb at that point in time. So it's already been pushed back, uh, three years, um, from that initial investigation of what we wanted to do. So it's, it's at a breaking point as it is right now. So it's, it's hard to speculate, but we just, it's something that we just have to move forward with, with an option and keep going. But do you want to speak on the Jace?
Sure, so there's a control board.
Sure. So there's a control board that sits in a, like a electrical cabinet in one of the mechanical rooms. That's a brand name is called, the component name is called a Jace controller. It's a computer circuit. And so you would probably be able to reuse that actual component, the equipment, the hardware. Unfortunately, a lot of the cost of installation is programming, and so they're going to have to program it to hook up to your new, to your existing systems. And then they'd have to reprogram it. And so that labor cost, you're going to be paying for again, more or less when they install the new system. But the actual hardware, you would most likely get to keep and reuse. The other component that I believe was being replaced was a heat exchanger. And so that's a tube of metal that's inside one of the rooftop units, and that's going to go when the rooftop unit goes. But it's very necessary for right now.
Right, right. Thank you. And you know, this is, now that we are consistent, beginning to be consistent with our capital improvement plan, we won't be scrambling to take care of what we should have been taking care of.
Correct. Yeah, this will be well planned out. We're on the dance.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate. Oh, and clerk Flintoff, sure, go ahead.
I have one more comment and then I, you have to make a motion. I just want to thank Chris, Brandon, and Christie. I want to say something. Like, I think this right here is a reflection of the capacity that we have worked so hard to build over the last few years in Siao Township to have three well-informed staff people before this board. I don't know if it's ever happened, working together to give us the right information together. You know, when I got here, staff people didn't even come to the board, right? And so we didn't have, we weren't using good information. We weren't using our staff. We're doing that. So I want to thank you all, and it works so well because you three are working together. I want to be clear too. I want the three of you to continue working together. I hope that Chris will be our lead project manager on this from A to Z. Brandon, to stick with the HVAC building, all of the mechanical and technical expertise that you have in partnership with Caleb as we need it. And Christie, I want.
They're responsible for the people.
So any more of this like, oh, we're going to have to hire, you know, get a trailer or do remote work. I don't want to hear that one more time. And so Christie, please, you are the one responsible, the only one responsible for giving us your best recommendation about IT and seating and all this stuff. Otherwise, it just creates a lot of hand wringing around the office that brings down morale and worries people.
Predictable, Jessica.
So predictable. And with that, I have a motion.
So this, and I want you to say your motion, and it probably might be what I'm saying, but so it just. I know, I didn't mean to stop you, but I, I just wanted to reiterate that we now are recommending option five. That's all I'm saying. I figured that's what you had in mind, but I just wanted to reiterate.
Yeah, because we, we need to amend the motion. I have a proposed motion.
Okay. I would like to direct the project manager to develop an RFP for the design and engineering for option five fan coil units geothermal parentheses ground source and parentheses comma to be proposed to the Board of Trustees at a regular meeting as soon as reasonably possible.
Support.
Ryan, supports. And are we finished discussing this? Yes. Okay, thank you. This is. Yeah, let's take a roll call.
Gable?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brand?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion adopted seven zero. And Jan too, intended to extend my thanks to you voters as well, because you both have been doing great work on this for the last couple of years.
Thank you so much.
H seven. Chief? I switched everything around, so I'm sorry. Let me find that.
H seven.
H seven, yes.
And I pulled this from consent authorization for fire department to buy for the AFG grant because the chief has a new recommendation.
Yes, if you're all ready. So part of the process is we get very short notice of assistance to firefighters grants, application being open and what we can apply for. We've got to evaluate our needs based on what FEMA considers high priority, which changes every year. And we can apply for various subjects. I want, I'm going to ask the board to remove an application for $500,000 for a ladder truck. Because as I read through the notice of funding opportunity, I think we have better opportunity replacing our water tanker that we're not replacing now through one of these grants. So FEMA, when they award a grant, they consider previous grant awards of a similar type. So while this is probably a lower, a lower chance of getting awarded half a million dollars for a ladder truck, if we do get that, that reduces our chance of future vehicle awards. When we ask voters to fund a second fire station, some of the capital removed from that was replacement of a water tanker that would go down there. So now we're putting our 25-year-old water tanker into Station Two after it gets built. We'll have a new one in Station One, and I think we'll have a much better chance of replacing a 25- to 27-year-old water tanker a couple of years from now than we will getting the money for a ladder truck today. And if we do get money for a ladder truck today, that further reduces our chance of getting a million dollars towards a water tanker. So I think it's not really calculus, but you know, a little bit of gambling, and I think it's a better gamble to not apply for this half a million dollars today in anticipation of doing so for a larger project a few years down the road.
And I concur with your recommendation.
Is that something that we need board action on or?
Yeah, so simply your motion would read, motion second to authorize the fire chief to make one application to the assistance to firefighters grant program for firefighting equipment.
I'd support that.
You need to, somebody needs to first. A motion.
I would move, move the motion as read into our record by Chief Lloyd.
Support.
Okay. This is, well, for grants, we need to do a roll call.
It's always an option. It's not required.
Let's do a roll call. I just feel.
Gable?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brand?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yeah.
Motion adopted seven zero. Yes, yeah, got it, chief. Okay, four, review of employee handbook for recommended changes and.
Aurora, would you please share the, the plan because you did with me earlier and yeah, it made sense.
So a committee reviewed the employee handbook consisting of myself, Chico, Rebecca, and Jill Thacker, and I think also Mariah and/or Jim may have looked at the initial first draft and referred the applicable parts that we were recommending updates to Bill Thacker. So basically, we reviewed it in totality and would like the board to review and look at the proposed changes. There are attorney-client privileged comments there from Bill Thacker. But we would like the board to review it to see what, if there are any questions, if there's anything that stands out in terms of why are we making this change? And then hopefully bring that draft as a revised handbook, employee handbook for the December 17th in the board meeting.
I just suggest as a process for this, I know the board received under separate cover the attorney-client privileged edits to each of us take time, look at it and send Aurora comments, have conversation, get clarification, and then when it does come back to the board, it'll be a public redlined copy of the black line, whatever you want to do, reflecting the changes that are proposed for our next meeting.
When could you send the edits?
What time, or what day was that?
Within the, within the last few days.
Yes.
It was in the last few days, and the subject matter did indicate attorney-client privilege.
On Monday, okay. And we don't expect to go into the content right now. Yeah, no, but they're.
Just want to make sure I got it.
Yeah.
I don't.
Could you just resend it, please?
Yes.
I think that would be, yeah, especially when we have a list of emails that come through. Star and flag and whatever you need to do. And we don't need to do anything with this. Yeah. It's welcome. Any comments, please?
Yeah, and thank you for all your work. I know many months went into.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the. Oh, Chris Chang, Chris.
Well, we have here for the.
We have. Yeah.
He asked me, he needed to be here for this, and I, they said you weren't mentioned, so I.
If you're a gentleman.
I, I could say, I just don't know what I can answer since it's a confidential, yep.
Last thing on the agenda. So this is the preservation easement purchase and.
I'm disappointed that Liz and Lisa did not stick or.
We did ask. Yeah, we, we did ask them. I did touch base with them outside. I, and just to double check to make sure if they wanted to participate because they won't be able to participate by Zooms. And I think it was just too late. Liz knew that. It will be in just a second. They, they felt like we already had enough information in the packet, and I know the consultants will be here too. But because we are going to be considering the purchase of or lease of real property, I'd like to make a motion that this board move into closed session for the purpose of considering the purchase or lease of real property up to the time an option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained as permitted by MCL 15.268 subsection 1B.
All in favor?
And then we, I'd like to do a roll call vote.
Oh, sure. Roll, yes, roll, roll call.
Gable?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brand?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Seven zero. The board is now in closed session beginning at 8:44 PM. With that, I'd like to ask all other members, public besides Chris, to please leave.
And we will have, we will have public comment.
Yeah, are you? And then in terms of members. I would ask that you please log off too. I just wanted to note already, some of what we've done before, we have an option for closed session. Sometimes if we think you're going to come back and do a bunch of this, they can only pick up and go into another. I think they can now. For public comment.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jess, can I interrupt for a moment?
Do you want to, since one thing I would suggest online is that we end the online option for the rest of the meeting. Because we, we have two options here. So we did just move to go into closed session, but procedurally, if you wanted to do public comment ahead of this before we can, but, but people online can also just, you know, well, they've come and come back in person if they wish. We have seven people.
Yeah, is there a way to?
Dark room. I don't know what it's.
Yeah. The recording session. So, so yeah, so been through this a few times. Never. So the best way to deal with it is if I could ask our public to please log off of Zoom so I don't have to remove you. Because if I remove you from Zoom, you will not be able to rejoin Zoom.
Jess, if I can answer you, advice?
Yes, Rob.
I would suggest that you mute the room and then you turn off the camera, so it's just a black screen. And that will assure that the closed session is indeed closed session. That has been an issue before. And, and then you pause the Zoom recording, and then you can come back for a public comment and resume the recording, and then turn the audio back on and turn the camera back on. But in order to assure that it's not overheard, you need to mute the room and turn the camera off.
Rob, I really, really appreciate that advice, especially from you. Long story short, I'm not comfortable with that option. So I would just suggest then what we might do is if this board, maybe we could just go forward to the small conference room. We'll leave Zoom on. And then we're going to go to the small conference room, Rob, and we're going to come back into this room when we're done, okay?
That works for me. Yeah, let's do that.
Thank you. We're in closed session. We're going to go into the small conference room. Please bring this special material you are handed.
Judy, I thought Barry was going to be here too.
I have to.
Hey, the board is returning to open session. Come on in.
Good to see you. That was the drive. Well, I don't know, it was something.
Where does that?
Oh, my gosh, you're crazy.
Yeah.
But I am.
Oh, what is this? Like the zone, whatever it is. It's like the zone I like. Oh, my goodness.
I know, yes. Yeah, I know, that's. Yeah, and so then I, I. Those training to.
Jessica, there's a.
Yeah.
Awesome, man.
So included in his, okay.
Oh, okay, um.
So I wanted to.
The board is now in session?
Oh, session.
Okay, session, but we're missing people. Oh, Kathy.
There's a cat.
Kathy.
I've also paid it to my. Okay, um, nine oh five, the board is in open session. I'd like to make a motion to postpone item K five until the next regular board meeting of December seventeen.
The board?
Um. We don't need to. All in favor, voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All. Motion passes.
Thanks, Chris.
No, it's a public comment.
Chris, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, as a boss.
Anyone in person would like to speak during public?
Anything, Rob, then, um, item that I had mentioned to you the other day about the air braking.
Come to the.
Positive table.
Coming to the table. Just bringing this up, um, because I will send in, once I get my computer working again, uh, a form through the website, um, I want you all to consider, um, now, uh, posting signs on Miller Road between M fourteen and the roundabout at Wagner. Ever since that roundabout, um, the trucks have been unreal and going very fast, and they started air braking. The other day I texted Jillian, and because it was so loud, it was early in the morning, that I was in my garage, which actually is heated, so the furnace was on in the garage at the time. I was getting my horse food ready. And I, it shook the garage. My garage was brick also, and I couldn't believe it. It was that loud. Well, a truck did it again tonight, so, um, I think there needs to be a posting of, you know, air braking prohibited, like you guys put on Z Road. I think that's helped a little bit here. Um. They definitely, I don't know what else can stop it. We had a sheriff out there a lot this fall. Um, catching speeders, et cetera, because they can flow right through that, that roundabout, and they have with, with trains, because I've, I'll be coming up, um, Wagner, you know, going, um, north, and I can just see them. And they didn't slow down, so, so, um.
They're all over the circle.
Yeah, there's times that they've gone over the circle. There's times that it's, it's scary. It's, there's some real, that, that roundabout isn't um, designed like the one here on Zeeb and, uh, Miller, which is a little bit more difficult, um, that you really have to, it's a tighter turn. This one is just a little bit smoother or something, so it allows for cars, everything. The Charger has not shown up. He's been, he used to come every morning, so, but I haven't heard him lately. So, uh, but the trucks, yeah, they're, they're pretty amazing. I'm, I've been really surprised lately, and I never thought I'd be the person to say this, and that's another thing that I said, but it's, it's outrageous. And, you know, so.
Laura, if you could send that, um, through our website, so we have a record of it, and then we can kind of work on that.
Get to it.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Because this was, you know, Patton Billstein, who brought this issue. We have an ordinance. I would suggest that Christie, you please call the road commission and ask them to put a couple of those signs there, see what the cost is. That's all we did last time.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's easy. They have the signs.
Okay, I mean, you want to know what the cost is?
Yeah, I mean, we need to file, yeah, a regular procurement policy, of course. Um, secondly, you know, maybe you could just call the sheriff um, and ask them to, um, put some extra patrol around there.
Okay. As I recall, last time.
Hold on.
Stein requested this.
Yeah, that's.
We had to create the.
A long time.
But that's because we were less.
Things could take a little time.
But the signs did not take time.
Okay.
Yeah, once the signs, once you guys agreed to the signs, they went up immediately.
Yeah, it was the, I think it was the ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance.
Okay.
And Christie, are you speaking?
I am. Speaking for a friend.
Yay.
I was talking with Renee Klubek out in the lobby there, and she had mentioned that over at the Siobhan, that somebody is doing welding outside, close to the barn. And it's interesting because somebody else brought that to my attention or, or mentioned it to me. And I said, well, I mean, I know that they do work out there, but, you know, they're saying that they're very close to the barn, and Renee is the second person that brought it up, because her first question was, who pays the insurance there? And I said, we do, and she said, well, they're welding very close, and I, so.
That barn is doubly insured. By Dominic.
But I'm just saying, but there's concerns by the public, because they're seeing pe- people welding. Out there.
It's their own personal projects.
But that's the second person then, because I said to her, I was like, sometimes I don't remember who tells me what.
I don't know that that would be prohibited by our lease, but certainly worth.
Okay, but she wanted the board to be aware of it, but she didn't want to stay, so I said, I'll let them know, so.
That was cool.
Well, I thought, you know what? I might as well do it like everybody else, so that's it.
More water.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you.
That's all being.
Right.
No water now.
So I'll check into it.
Okay.
You went online for public comments?
Yes, please.
Oh.
But first off, we've got Rob Caddinson, followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Rob?
You might, you could be faster, David. After Rob.
Thank you. First of all, I sincerely apologize, apologize for barging into your meeting. I was the one last year who stumbled into a committee's closed session, and I wrote.
I bet you did.
And I wanted to make sure that your closed session security was indeed secure, so that's why I butted in, and I apologize for doing that. Um, secondly, welcome, um, Laura Hindle to the planning commission with her personal and professional experience. That's going to be a perfect um, addition to the planning commission, and David Reed with his award-winning home, um, that is sustainable and all of his history with land preservation in Siobhan Township. He too is a perfect fit for the LPC, and welcome to Joelle and David to, uh, to Siobhan Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob, and I always sincerely appreciate your tips, Rob. Jonathan Greenberg.
Hi, Jonathan Greenberg, and I, I know you also appreciate whenever I barge in and comment too, so, um, I'll just, uh, leave it there. No, I'm just kidding. Um, hey, I just wanted to comment that this was the first meeting that I didn't have to make public comments at the beginning and, uh, have none at the end. So just wanted to let you know, you're doing a great job.
You having none? Well, thank you.
I'm sure you'll screw up sooner or later, but just.
Jonathan, are you happy?
Really well.
We're interactive now.
I like it.
Any other interested public? Do you have none? Uh, we have one in person.
Oh, we would.
Okay.
Sorry, you went right over me, but.
Hi, Arjen.
That's okay. I was, I just want to say, this is what a board meeting should be. Tonight's meeting is what a board meeting should be, and this is what we've been missing for the last probably ten years. So, but thank. So, but thank you very much, this has been a, a really great example of a well-run meeting, and a very interactive meeting, thank you.
Thank you. David, thanks for all your service, David.
Two seconds, David. I thirty.
Amen, David.
Okay, in a fourth.
Okay, um.
You thought I was going to say that.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support my riser.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Adjourned at nine eleven.
Motion passes.
Wow.
Uh, which I, I can't see.
It's nine thirteen, I guess.
We're adjourned at nine thirteen.
Eleven, nine eleven.
It's nine eleven, I'm here.
Yeah, that's.
Nice job, Jillian.